I think we're ready when you're ready.
All right, today's work session is to help the Planning and Zoning Commission review and make its recommendations to the Anchorage School Board and the Anchorage Assembly regarding the annual update to the Anchorage School District's Capital Improvement Plan update. The powers and duties for the Planning and Zoning Commission for advising the School Board and Assembly in this annual matter are in Anchorage Municipal Code, Section 21.0-
Let's speak up, speak up closer to the phone, please.
For the annual review of the ASD CIP from a planning and zoning perspective, it's primarily to review the CIP and its projects for consistency with the overall direction for urban development in the comprehensive plan. So that includes the city's 20- to 30-year forecast, housing, population growth, its long-term public facility needs, and other comprehensive plan policies. So it's really a matter of how well does the facility plans for the school district fit in with the city's overall anticipated growth and its comprehensive plan. This is a non-public hearing item. It is scheduled for deliberations next week, January 11th, at the regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. That schedule is to enable the School Board to receive the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendations and its resolution before the School Board deliberates and takes action on the CIP in later February. So after the Planning and Zoning Commission has deliberated in January and its final resolution signed by early February, its recommendations will be immediately forwarded to the Assembly and School Board. So that's the schedule. Last week, you received this year's draft Capital Improvement Plan, 2021 through 2027, and the ASD's cover letter with that dated December 30th. Tonight, Tom Fenicev, Director of ASD Capital Planning and Construction, is here with Tom Ross, the ASD Chief Operating Officer, and their team to deliver a summary presentation of the 2021 to 2027 draft CIP and field questions from Commissioners. And their team present this evening includes Rachel Molina-Ladoun, Project Support Manager, Larry Morris, Planning and Design Supervisor, both of them with ASD Capital Planning and Construction, as well as Mike Fisher, Vice President and Principal Consultant for Northern Economics. And Mike is here and available to answer questions about the one-to-six-year student enrollment projections. Tonight is a short meeting time, I understand. In fact, it might have to end by 6:00. Well, we'll have to end by 6:10 for technical reasons. But any additional questions that Commissioners have after tonight, please email those to me, Tom Davis, with the Planning Staff, and I'll work with the ASD team to provide written answers this week. And the staff case memo, also forthcoming this week, will address all questions. With that, I'd like to go ahead and turn it over to Tom Fenicev, who will provide the ASD's summary presentation. Thank you.
Okay, do all of you have the PowerPoint show up in front of you? No. Okay. I see it popping up on the screen now.
Just for clarification, are you currently on the bridge?
I'm on both.
Okay.
I'm talking through the phone, and then I've muted everything on the Teams.
Okay, we're going to turn up the volume on our end a little bit. You should be good to go.
I was getting some feedback earlier, so I had to turn off the speakers.
All right, we have it as loud as we can go.
Okay, well, I'll be, I'll try to speak up as much as I can.
You can go ahead.
Okay.
Tom, do you want me to advance?
Yeah, I'm not seeing the presentation. I'm seeing your file manager.
Oh, is the presentation not running?
No.
I have it up, I have it up on my, hmm, okay.
It's the file manager.
The file manager?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to try it again. Is it up?
Um, all I'm seeing is the screen. No, it's back to the file manager. We're looking at all the files.
I apologize. Is that better?
There we go.
Okay, apologies, apologies.
All right, okay, so the purpose of our Capital Improvement Plan, or the six-year Capital Improvement Plan, is to provide information and then receive guidance to finalize that recommendation when we finally go forward. Next slide. So what we're going to talk about today is some of the requirements for the Capital Improvement Plan, the timeline associated with that, capital assets, how it's developed, and then finally get into what is the six-year Capital Improvement Plan overview. Next. Okay, so these are all the requirements. Probably the most important one is the one at the bottom, the code under Title 21, which talks about planning and the, or, I'm sorry, the top one, which talks about timelines and how we work with the municipality and the Planning and Zoning Commission to bring forth our six-year Capital Improvement Plan. Next. So this is the process, the timeline that it goes through. As you can see, we're just at the stage of presenting the information to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then feedback will allow us to take that feedback to the School Board during their two-session review. So the first one is on the 2nd of February, and then finally on the 16th of February, the School Board will do action, the item. And then eventually in March, we'll get it over to the Assembly for their final meeting in March 23rd. And then lastly, in April, we'll be submitting our six-year Capital Improvement Plan to the Department of Education. Next. So about our capital assets, we have got the largest physical plant in Anchorage and one of the largest in the state, plenty of facilities, almost 8 million square feet. So it's a lot to upkeep, including a replacement value at approximately $2 billion. Next slide. So what do we consider when we're putting together the six-year capital plan? We talk about our future and unfunded requirements, and I'll talk about the little, a little bit later. We look at the Facility Conditions Index. We take into consideration guidance from the Board and the Assembly, and also the Capital Improvement Advisory Committee, and also the Capital Planning Committee. All these incorporate and make up our recommendation to the School Board in terms of our six-year Capital Improvement Plan. Next. So Board guidance on capital planning, what we've seen last couple of years is flat and declining enrollment, and we're looking at using that space efficiently. And then, of course, the moratorium on state bond debt reimbursement, which began in 2015, was supposed to end in 2020, and now has been extended another five years. Next slide. So this is from our, the School Board in terms of guidance on capital planning. The short of it is, is taking care of what we've got in a bond debt reimbursement moratorium. So a lot of that's been focusing on deferred requirements for the past years. Now we're getting a little bit closer into the more capital investments, and you'll see that in our six-year plan. Next. So in collaboration with the municipality's planning department. Next. Also working with Northern Economics, they provide all our demographic information. And we've got Mike Fisher also online today. And then, so what we've got on this slide is where we've been historically versus what were projected. So we can see that flat to declining enrollment, and those are due to a lot, a lot of items that are mentioned in our Capital Improvement Plan, and then specifics about projections. We can also, we can also see that, that it's, you know, it's declining over time. But for more information on specific projections and the demographics, we can refer those questions to Mike Fisher, who's online today, and talk about that. Currently, this doesn't include the current numbers. Our current numbers are a little under 42,000 in terms of student enrollment, and that's as of September 30. Next. So in most of our Capital Improvement Plans, we show the current capacity versus our projections. Due to COVID, it makes it very difficult right now to get accurate six-year projections. So what we did here is we're comparing last year's to our current enrollment as of September 30th of 2020, and we're showing the comparison between the two. So this is, you know, impacts of COVID right now. So this is elementary. As we can see, our enrollment is down significantly due to COVID. But what we've also seen is, you know, differences and elevations in some of our other programs, such as Family Partnership, their program, they were, last year they had 691. This year their program is almost up to 1,700, and that's a correspondent homeschool-type-based program. And that's most likely, you know, due to, due to COVID. But here's our Eagle River Elementary School capacities. Middle schools. We don't have a significant change in our high school. So one of the other areas that we receive input and recommendations is from the Capital Improvement Advisory Committee and also the Capital Planning Committee. And if you're not familiar with those committees, Capital Improvement Advisory Committee is where we bring in people from outside ASD, but those who are involved in the community and who have some idea about capital improvement and community planning, and we get their input. And then the Capital Planning Committee is made up of ASD educators. Normally, we get information about changes in educational programs from the educators through the Capital Planning Committee. So Capital Improvement Advisory Committee is external, where Capital Planning Committee is internal. And you can see their recommendations there. So this is a slide I like to include because it-
Can you go back to that last slide?
Sure.
I'm just keying in on your third bullet point, supporting and developing longer-range plans to improve capacity in educational program. Thank you.
No problem. So this is a slide that talks about standards for facility investments, and it talks about different areas that we should be investing in our schools, and how that breaks down in terms of our current replacement value. So how much we should be investing in schools for a sustainable infrastructure. Next slide, please. So this is an interesting slide. It talks about our current and unfunded requirements. We currently have $752 million in unfunded requirements. That includes things like deferred maintenance, replacing outdated or aged-out systems in the building. The good news on this slide is that last year, and the last year, it was up to $780 million. But the improvements that we made over last summer and are making this year have reduced that significantly, and so now we're down to $752 million. On the right, it shows our forecasted requirements, and that's based off of our Facilities Condition Index and that assessment program. So we can see within the next six years, each year, how much we're expecting to need to put into different schools and different systems. So that helps us in identifying and forecasting our future needs under the secure Capital Improvement Plan.
Question?
Yes.
You're basing the unfunded requirements based on a national statistical number. You're tracking now below, in the first year, you put quite a dent into that number. What has been your historical basis compared to the national statistical number that you're benchmarking against? How does that, how does that compare to reality? How is that matching up against your facility folks' review of the actual needs and requirements for the facilities? And the reason I ask that is I use a similar model within the federal government sector, and there are national, national, here's how much you need to spend for deferred maintenance and so forth, and there's projections out there, but it varies, it varies widely depending on the area of the country you're in.
I would say, based on the model and from what we can see on the items that are on the right, so our future requirements that we're looking at, you know, 2022 through 2027, we can see that we're ranging from $51 million up to, you know, $96 million. If you look at the average of that, it's about $70 million. What it doesn't include is escalation due to construction costs. It doesn't include educational changes. For example, you know, all of a sudden, they say pre-K now requires playground equipment that is age-appropriate for a pre-kindergarten program. So that would be an example of an educational program change that we'd invest money in. So you get an average of about $70 million, and that's just for life-for-life replacements and of the various components that are, that are just aging out. So that doesn't include other needs from education. So if you include those other educational needs, it's going to be a little bit more than $70 million, which puts us right into the ballpark of about $80 million, which is, the previous slide explained, is somewhere around, you know, where we should be investing for sustainable infrastructure. The next slide? So we often, in our six-year Capital Improvement Plan, you'll see a targeted investment, you'll see a debt retirement number, and then you'll see what we plan on bonding for. Because we talk, you know, debt, retiring debt is important to us, that's why we include this slide, because it compares how much we're retiring in terms of debt retirement compared to our deferred requirement. So it's, it's a balance in between how much we're retiring and how much we're putting towards those deferred requirements.
But, quite question, but the deferred requirements are maintenance, whereas the bonding in the past has been new capital, typically more along the line of larger capital improvement programs. I understand there's rough, and there's other maintenance, but the bulk of your backlog of requirements is deferred maintenance. Is that correct?
Well, it's major maintenance and it's replacement of components that are aging out.
But it's not replacement of buildings?
Yes, it's not replacement of buildings, but what, what you have to consider is replacement of buildings versus the accumulation of all those deferred requirements, and that's where you do a cost-benefit analysis to see, is it cheaper to replace the building rather than to fix all these over time?
Thank you, understood.
Next slide. So here's the six-year CIP overview, and this is Table 1 in your hard copies. Years 1 through 5 mirror what we had last year, so no big surprises there. What's new is ROMIG middle school renovation, the planning and design for Bart High School improvements, and then Whaley School Planning and Design. And then we also have some upgrades to other improvements in schools throughout the district. Now, all these improvements, biggest things we factor in is where we are in the Facilities Condition Index, but there are also a number of other factors that may include health and safety, and then also the Educational Adequacy Index and how that's affected. So of note, up top is our targeted capital investment, our projected bond amount, and anticipated debt retirement. The target capital investment includes, for example, years 1 and 2 debt retirement. If you add the anticipated debt requirement together, you get the targeted investment for year 2. And because we're now on a two-year bonding cycle, you'll see that there's in years 3, in years 5, 1, 3, and 5, there are no, there are no bonds. So our projected bond amounts are, for year 2, is slightly under, but slightly over in year 4, and slightly under in year 6. So we're still pretty much falling within the guidance of staying within our debt retirement. Any questions on six-year CIP overview?
This is Commissioner Greg Strike. Some generalized questions over what we've seen thus far. So the total projection of headcount in the school district is projected to be down 3,000, 3,000 headcount through 2025 based on last year's numbers. But what I heard you say was that we're currently at 42,000, which already places us, and due to COVID, which already places us well beyond the number that you projected to be in 2025. So we've not, we've not only met the 2025 threshold, we've exceeded it, and it's 2,000, we're just entering 2021 now. Is that correct?
So we don't know, obviously COVID has, has had a unique impact on our enrollment numbers, so we really cannot use that as an assessment now because we don't, you know, we'd like to think everyone's coming back and that they're not changing their educational model. But yes, we've, we've had some decline. We don't know whether it's due to COVID completely or not.
So four, four years ago, the school district approached the headcount forecasting by adopting a new model on how to forecast employing in returning students or total enrollment. And that was a brand-new program that was initiated, I want to say, three, four years ago. Is that the same program you're currently using, or have you switched to a third program now?
That's the same program that we're currently using, and it's fairly accurate in terms of estimations. It's been within 2%, sometimes within 1% for every single time.
Is that a standard deviation that you're, that you accept, 2%?
Yes.
Okay. Four years ago, the projection was to see a steady decrease, yet that was contradictory by the numbers that were presented, and the numbers that was presented by the school district were actually up at that point, and the actual numbers actually came down substantially lower. For the last three years, I've been, I've been on the bandwagon here trying to encourage, what's our, what's our default position, or what's our, what's our contingency- our default position, or what's our contingency plan? And what is our, with enrollment projected by a number of sources to go down, contrary to what the school district was projecting three years ago? What's our contingency plan for closing schools?
You know, the idea to close schools will be evaluated after each year, but we actually have closed two schools within the last few years.
Let's not count Elmendorf and Fort Rich, though. I mean, I believe the schools that you're going to mention are in Elmendorf and Fort Rich, or Fort Rich or Elmendorf, one of the two out there. But those happen for other reasons as well. So do we have any plans now in the future that can show that we have some contingency planning in place? I mean, 3,000 headcount decrease through 2025 is on your plan right now. If that accelerates, it just, it helps me to understand that we have thought about the options, we've thought about the future, and we have some contingency plans in place. But instead of being reactionary when it does happen, which tends to be our mode of operandi these days, I'm just trying to get ahead of the power curve here.
So we do have contingency plans, but none of them have reached any of that threshold where they need to be considered.
Who pays for the schools out at Fort Richardson? Or who paid for those? Was that school district funding through bonding, or was that the federal government, Department of Defense?
They were originally a Department of Defense school. However, once we took them over, ASD took them over, we paid for the operations and maintenance of those schools.
But not the actual physical capital improvement of the school itself. So we let an asset go by, I mean, I understand what was going on. I build schools for a living, and have built schools for a living, so I understand the numbers game here. So that's where, you know, trying to find the best bang for the buck for the community and for the taxpayers, whether it be in contingency planning, whether it be in capital improvements for new buildings, or whether it be in what deferred maintenance is best to be offset. So that's what I'm trying to grapple here, especially seeing the, I mean, I applaud your numbers showing a 3,000 headcount decrease through 2025. That's the first time we've seen, I've seen, in eight, nine years on the commission, that those type of numbers being presented as a forecast, which is encouraging to me, because I think you're getting ahead of the power curve here by doing so. I just want to build on that, to build a plan that goes before the assembly, goes before the taxpayers, to show that we've got a handle on this. And the more we can show that we're not reactionary and being proactive and following that plan, I think you're going to be able to get bonds through. I think you're going to get much of this through by showing this type of non-reactionary type of program that, no offense, the school district has been notorious for promoting in the past. So I applaud the new numbers that you have put forward. I think we now need to just leverage that, market it, so that it can be sold, both to the taxpayers and to the assembly. And I'll get off my bandwagon, I'll get off my soapbox there. Thank you.
Just, sorry, Danielle, can we turn that off? Just to put Commissioner- Hello? Just to put Commissioner Strike back up on the soapbox, I want to just echo his concerns. I think he raises a really good point. I understand not wanting to shut down a school before you reach the threshold. However, you're looking at the threshold per individual school, where if we look at the elementary attendance, in five years, it's supposed to drop 10%. And when you have multiple schools at the, and this is based on the 2019 numbers, which are a little more positive than 2020, you have them at 59%, 51%, 63%, 69%, 71%. And so when you have enough of those schools that are this close to being near a threshold aggregately, when we're looking at a 10% decrease in an elementary school population, I think we do need to be a little more proactive and not just look at when one school reaches that cutoff. It needs to be, wow, all of these schools are trending that way. We should be a little more proactive and start thinking, maybe it is time to relook at some of these lines and see if we can shuffle things around to be more forward-thinking. And now I'll get off. Commissioner Strike's soapbox. Commissioner Winchester?
Yeah, do you think, do you see any capital needs going forward for technology? If we're going to be delivering education remotely any longer, will you guys see need for like a data center or laptops or anything like that show up in this capital improvement exercise? Thanks.
So in answer to your question, information technology things that are not components of the building system are not bondable, therefore not part of our packages normally. If it's part of a greater project, which we can capitalize upon, of course, but, you know, computer systems or computers and that sort of thing are not part of this funding.
Thank you. Just to answer, Rachel, after Commissioner Strike was speaking, I was speaking, Danielle Bailey. Commissioner O'Quinn, and for timing purposes, this will probably be our last question.
Thank you. So I just had a couple of questions regarding, you know, just the process of disposing of surplus real estate assets. Like I know on some of the maps, the Totem Fields and West Park Tracts are identified, and I believe those are currently vacant. And then I know that there's, you know, there's some schools that have some pretty significant outstanding deferred maintenance that is, that probably, you know, don't warrant completing. And so what's the, what kind of long-term planning for real estate disposal, you know, thinking in terms of, you know, what we're looking at here, the capital budget kind of overlaid with the long-term planning goals of the municipality, making those tracks available using the funds raised from, you know, any sort of asset sales to help pay down other, you know, debt retirement or some of these deferred maintenance? I was wondering if you could speak to that.
Right now, we have no plans to dispose of any property. I don't like to consider those items as surplus, because they certainly are. I think over time, we can expect Anchorage to grow, and as Anchorage does grow at some point, we are going to need to, need that land to build more schools and meet the educational needs of our community.
All right, and with that, I think we are out of time. I want to thank everyone for coming in their presentation. And I think we just need to have time to transition. Just as for all the commissioners, I want to remind you that you need to leave this meeting and join the actual meeting that starts at 6:30.
All right, so-